John, I am having some massive internet issues this evening. So I'm going to immediately make you a co-host.
Okay.
And I'll make Megan one also.
Okay.
On and that way, if anything, if I drop off, you guys will sort of default to hosting. And then I will get back on as soon as I can.
And I'm recording now, I believe, Sarah too, right?
Yes, I allowed you to record.
Yeah, I just did it. Thank you. Dr. Bucky, I am James Maroney from Marblehead TV. I want to introduce myself to you.
It's nice to meet you.
Hope I can meet you in person someday. So I record all the meetings and edit them and all that stuff. So pleasure to meet you.
If I say anything bad, please edit it out.
Welcome to Marblehead.
Megan, I made you and John a co-host already. Especially since my internet is just, it was wonky late in the afternoon as well. So.
The rain.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna turn my video off for a sec, see if I can get my documents opened.
Okay.
Emily, are you excited for your first meeting?
Yeah, this is actually my second meeting.
Well, your old habit is I'm the only one with the first meeting.
Sorry, I like tried to talk and I was on mute. Meeting, you know.
You did great.
Somebody in the waiting room? You want me to admit them?
Sure, if you see them before I do, you can.
I don't know who a foul player might be, so.
Well, it's an open meeting, so I, it sometimes is silly to me that we do a waiting room because I can't really not allow someone in. So I guess I just kick them out immediately when, if something bad happens.
We had a new superintendent's induction meeting today and they subdivided us into breakout rooms that were timed and then you went back to the general meeting. I didn't realize Zoom had all that capacity.
It does. I do not have that kind of Zoom knowledge.
David Harris wants to join. No way. I bet we get record attendance.
We might.
Welcome, John.
Hey, David, how are you?
Great, thanks. There was, there was a time in history when it was the best show in town, but we like to not have that claim anymore. So we'll see how it goes.
Well, I may tee it up tonight. We may go back.
Didn't, didn't.
We're only going forward.
Yes.
Do we have, we had over 100, what, a month and a half ago for one meeting?
Yes, yes. And, and we had over 100 early on as well, but that was when my cap was at 100. So we got tagged for an open meeting, which we fixed that real quick.
Right.
So now I think we can have up to 300. We haven't come anywhere close to that.
I want to be able to celebrate large crowd size, to say that I had the biggest crowd size in the history. I draw the biggest crowds.
Say that no matter what, John. Hi, Nan. We can't hear you.
Oh, no, we can.
Can we?
Okay.
Oh, there we go. All right.
All right, great.
How are you?
I'm great. I'm great. How is everybody else?
Hot.
Yeah, hot. But I'm not complaining about that.
Yeah.
I only complain about cold.
I'm with you. I'm with you. We wait all year for nights like this.
Exactly.
Yep, yep.
Sarah, are you dialing in on phone too? Or are we gonna give it a try?
No, I think it's been working for me lately.
Okay, knock on wood.
What I found is very helpful is for people that aren't involved at the meeting, if they keep their video off, it decreases the, I don't know if it's bandwidth or what being used, but it seems to run more smoothly.
That's good. I've found that if you turn, when you're speaking, if you turn your video off as well, it, it helps a bit, especially on the Chromebooks. Lisa just texted me and she's actually Lisa Atkinson on this tonight, so that everyone knows she is here. I still got some people filtering in, so I'll give it a few minutes more before we officially open the meeting.
What I want to know is when is Bono going to perform for the school committee? When can we get him to have a little cameo appearance?
I think we should do it. My husband is great at karaoke. I'll let him know.
Maybe if you hashtag him on Instagram, he'll, he'll talk.
Maybe, maybe.
That's worth it, David. On the superintendent's desk.
Already on sticky.
Megan's husband, great at karaoke.
If anybody wants to do public comment or plans to do public comment, if you want to just type your name and address into the chat function, and then I'll know to call on you when the time comes. All right, I think we've slowed a little on people joining, so I will call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. Welcome, everyone, and welcome to our new superintendent. Been official for about a week at this point and we've got him, we've got him doing a lot of things already. So welcome, John. Let's hope this is the first of many. Does anybody have any commendations?
I do.
Go ahead.
First of all, I want to welcome Nan as well. She's joining us for the first time. She started last week as well. We're very excited to have both of you. And I wanted to make accommodation to Samantha Rosato, who, as you all know, organized the GoFundMe account, the GoFundMe drive for providing lunches and breakfasts as well all summer long to any student who needs it. As many of you may know, Samantha has been a longtime volunteer in our community. She's one of those volunteers that's very quiet about it, never seeks any limelight for it whatsoever, but does a tremendous amount throughout our community and has, has often surrounded her community efforts on making sure that no one goes hungry. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank her for everything she's done and just recognize her.
Thanks, Sarah. And Nan, I apologize for leaving you out. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I felt very welcome from the beginning, so you don't need to apologize.
Good. Anybody else have any commendations? All right, so we will move on to public comment. I've got two people right now. If anybody who has just been joining us wants to add their name in for a public comment, just put their name and address in the chat function. Alistair Connor, you're up first.
Wow, okay. Can you hear me? I'm in the middle of my dinner. You caught me. I thought we were doing this at the end. Lots of kids in the background. I just had questions regarding fall that I hadn't seen anything about reduced hours, if that was a possibility, and my ever-present question about outdoor classrooms. That was it.
Thank you, Star. We do have the reentry update. So John, it's going to go over that in a little while and can't promise any answers yet, but you know, things will be addressed. Erin Noonan?
Hi, hold on a second. Thanks so much, Sarah. Hi, welcome, John and Nan. Welcome to our district. I just, in the interest of keeping it brief, Erin Noonan, 15 Beverly Ave. I just wanted to make public comment specifically regarding the reentry planning for our extended school year students. This week, approximately 200 students in the district began receiving summer services, the vast majority of whom are, we are starting remote learning. And I, I do want to definitely commend Eric Oxford, who personally spoke to me after hours at length about his plan and his efforts and everything that he is doing to service the needs and the safety and balance that do that balance with our most vulnerable population and these teachers. I acknowledge that they've faced several obstacles, including inadequate state guidance and working through the leadership transition in the district, for sure. However, I just, I just need to put it on the record that remote learning is suboptimal for any student, but it is profoundly inadequate for these students. These are the most vulnerable of any in the district, those struggling with early literacy skills that are the foundation for future education. And consistent with the American Association of Pediatrics Recommendation, the risk of these students' continued school closures far outweighs the mitigated risks of potential exposure to the virus in July that we can address in our town right now. It must be the goal of everyone at the meeting, in my household's opinion, and everyone who works for the district, to transition our summer ESY program to in-person learning as soon as possible. It should be, in our opinion, a matter of days, not weeks. This is a very small group of students with student-teacher ratios far below state guidelines for in-person gatherings. We have our choice of the facilities throughout the town to host the program. The Board of Health and the Town Administrator have said that essentially there are no obstacles from their perspective. In my perspective, if the restaurants and nail salons and hair salons have managed to open, surely we can make this happen for our summer school students because I know the dedication of the educators, the parents, and the students to this endeavor. Putting aside the reasons for why we're here today, I, I just want this committee and administration to show fierce urgency in addressing, addressing this issue. And I'm speaking specifically about our most vulnerable population with the extended school year services right now, not talking about the fall and the reentry and the complicated issues that face the general education population. But if we are not able to succeed in this effort, it must cast doubt on our ability to do so for a much larger group this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Scott Solberg?
Scott Solberg, 1 Ramsey Road. Just on behalf of the Marblehead special, our CPAC Special Education Parent Advisory Council, just want to welcome you, John. We've been very, we've been working really well with Eric Oxford and really look forward to the vision that you've provided and just wanted to give a welcome. And we look forward to being able to chat with you to give you a more personal welcome pretty soon, sometime in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. That's the end of my list. Does anybody else want to make a public comment before we move forward? All right, so that brings us up to the appointment of the superintendent to the building committee. David, you can weigh in on this. We don't believe that we actually have to appoint Dr. Bucky to the building committee because he is the superintendent and we have to have the superintendent on that committee. David, do you have anything to add?
That's true. John, John has no choice. It comes with the position, but I think it's, it's going to be an exciting 12 to 14 months as we move forward to seeing the school come together, be built, the transition to opening the new school and all that will come along with it. So with that, I will just add to the formality of making a motion to bring John Bucky, Dr. John Bucky onboard as the superintendent of Marblehead Schools for the Gary School Building Committee.
So Dr. Second that? Is that how this works?
Second, sure.
All right, we have a motion and it's seconded. Any discussion around that?
No, just David, do we need to formally remove Bill just to clean up the roster for the MSBA? I know they like our roster to be cleaner.
Yeah, well, David Sandin submitted that to the MSBA. You're right. Anytime there's a change, and so we were, by statute, the superintendent is on the committee. So this was, we were just sort of doing this as a formality. I don't think we need to take a motion, a motion to remove Bill, but to your point, we'll let the MSBA know. John is now onboard, for sure.
Perfect.
And if, if we end up needing to remove Bill formally, we can just do that at our next meeting as well. So. All right, anything else? Okay, I will roll call. Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
Yeah.
All right, John, you're officially on.
Welcome aboard.
Added to the list.
So that moves us to our next appointment for the district's representative for the North Shore Education Consortium Board. This is, to my understanding, however, I've always known it, is that the, it's a group of superintendents from North Shore districts that meet together for support and guidance. I know they were, they worked closely at the beginning of the quarantine and the school closures. So it's important that, that John be named as our representative for that. So can I have a motion to appoint Dr. John Bucky as the district's representative to the North Shore Education Consortium Board?
So moved.
Megan moved. Sarah, second. Any discussion or questions on that? Okay, so I will move to a vote. Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Sarah Fox, that's a yes. And then David Harris?
Yes.
Sarah, I didn't get any of that, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, I got the yes. Thanks, Sarah. All right, so that, that vote is unanimous. Gotta love Zoom. All right, John, that moves us on to the superintendent report. And first up is the reentry planning update, so I will let you take over.
So through the chair and with your permission, I'd like to editorialize a little bit before I jump into my first two agenda items. Okay, first, I just want to thank Erin for her thoughtful comments on the extended year services. And I appreciate her acknowledgement of Eric Oxford and the work that he has done. Desi changed the rules of the game, so to speak, late last week. And Eric was in my office the minute that he got off of that conference call asking about how we could transition from all remote, which was the original guidance, to maybe in-person instruction. And so I appreciate her comments. I share her feelings and would just ask for her indulgence as we look to transition to in-person services. And thank you to Scott for his warm welcome. First, let me begin by saying how honored I am and excited to be here as the superintendent of schools in Marblehead. If the first five days are any harbinger of things to come, let me say with all humility, we have both chosen wisely. I would be remiss not to acknowledge Bill McCultiff and the work in his leadership over the last year in the district. He has laid a wonderful foundation for me as the incoming superintendent of schools. He has been invaluable during the transition. He cares deeply about Marblehead and the work he did here proves that. Even more, he has made himself available to me through text and emails and calls. And each time, he assures me that it is no bother and invites me to continue reaching out to him, which I will take him up on regularly. So I thought I'd be remiss not to acknowledge Bill. The administrative team is strong. Nan Murphy, our assistant superintendent, has already been a wonderful resource to me, serving as a great thought partner and a critical friend as we both navigate learning the district. Lisa, our executive assistant, has been a wealth of knowledge for our numerous questions. Eric Oxford, Michelle Cresta, Emily Dean have all been super knowledgeable, inspirational, and thoughtful. Kathleen has been such a resource on technology. I had a chance to meet with the building principals yesterday, who have also been just as wonderful. I shared a little vision and philosophy that I termed PPI. And I know in our term of, time of COVID, we're all familiar with PPE, Personal Protective Equipment. But the PPI for me is to presume positive intentions. I am here with no mandate other than to build trust in capacity in the district and our schools. Again, I think these initial days confirm that the community is rightfully excited for the future of our schools and our school districts. I, school district, I believe our brightest days are ahead of us. And so I appreciate your indulgence for an opening statement. Before I launch into two agenda items, I know people are very eager for me to speak to. The first is reentry. And let me begin by saying we are exactly where we should be. We are not behind. We are not ahead. And I know that public anxiety is strong as we look at the fall and the various scenarios that the department is putting out. Bill provided a wonderful framework for reopening based on the initial guidance that Desi provided on June 25th. And I think it's important to point out that date because tomorrow will be just two weeks since the department provided schools initial guidance for reopening. I was on a call with the commissioner the next day, on the 26th, where the question was asked of him, if we have our reopening scenarios ready to go, can we produce those and get moving? And I thought his response was very telling because he said, "While I want to commend your industriousness and appreciate the work that you have put in, I would caution you not to do so because conditions are changing so rapidly and the department is going to be much more prescriptive in our phased guidance." And the secondary phase of guidance from the department is not coming out until mid-July. And I think it's important to note that because some districts have gone ahead and produced wonderful documents that they are now in the process of walking back or rethinking or retooling as information changes and the conditions on the ground shift. So I just want to reiterate that we are exactly where we should be in our replanning efforts. In a meeting yesterday with the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable, little did I know I was an interloper at that meeting and that I was not yet confirmed to be a participant. But I will say there was a shared collective uniform anxiety in schools and districts feeling that they're not where their communities want them to be in terms of planning for the fall. That meeting, I had the new superintendent's induction meeting and my mentor, Christine McGrath, said to me today, she said, "I hope that you took some solace in knowing that the North Shore superintendents share the same questions and concerns that you might have now as a new superintendent trying to prepare for the fall." And so I don't want people to think that we are not on it, that we are not being purposeful and deliberate in our planning. The school committee has a document that lays the foundation for our work ahead. I will be producing that document for public release at the end of this week. I have shared it with the administrative team. The interest from the professional staff and parents and other stakeholders has been impressive. And so we have tried to create pathways and opportunities for broad stakeholder representation as we consider various committees and subcommittees, which I will go into more depth in a minute. I want to circle back to the building principles. I am in awe of the work that they have done to work in their buildings to determine capacity and needs. They are literally on their hands and knees with tape measurers, taking dimensions of rooms, clearing them, working with facilities, working with Todd Bloodgood and Michelle Cresta on facilities and budget concerns. So the behind-the-scenes planning that's going into the department's initial guidance should not be misinterpreted as nothing is happening and we are not purposeful in our planning efforts. I met with Jason Silva today to talk about some collaborative efforts that came up in the North Shore meeting where everybody's going to need PPE. Would it make sense for us to do a consortium buying approach rather than Marblehead buying 500 boxes of gloves? rather than Marblehead buying 500 boxes of gloves and Beverly buying 500 boxes of gloves and Gloucester? Is there a way to consolidate our planning and resource efforts? And there's been no move in that direction. But I do know that the collaborative or the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable would like to get school committees together, perhaps a representative from each school committee, so that you hear that the shared concerns across the North Shore, that it's not a Marblehead issue or a Swampscott issue or Beverly issue. So I feel very good about the work that's going in to reentry. Included in your packet is the framework we'll be using to begin meeting and the structure that we will take. As I said, we'll post this information on the website. We'll have a dedicated place on the district website for reentry. We will also be launching an email address that is for reentry questions themselves. So if somebody's at home and thinks of something, they can send to a dedicated email address a reentry question. And then that can be funneled to the appropriate committee, subcommittee, task force, or work group, which I'll go into a little effort to explain. We will have the overarching school reopening committee. That will serve as kind of the vetting source for the work of the numerous subcommittees, eight subcommittees to be precise. Those subcommittees will have further subdivisions in some cases that will be working groups or task forces to consider various things. And this all might sound a little nebulous right now. But as you get into the reentry planning process, the number of questions outweigh the number of answers at every turn. And so the subcommittees that we will have that will feed the reopening committee will be a teaching and learning pre-K to six subcommittee and a teaching and learning seven to 12 subcommittee. And our assistant superintendent Nan Murphy will adeptly lead both of those committees. All of these committees will have teachers, professional staff, and parent representatives on them with further opportunities if somebody would like to get involved in the work, they can contact the facilitator. There will be a facilities subcommittee, a technology subcommittee, health and safety, communication, transportation, food service, student activities, and athletics. Each of those will have a facilitator. That information will be on the website. So if somebody has an interest in serving, they can contact the facilitator for that particular group. Or they can send an email into the dedicated reopening email and I can get that information to the appropriate subcommittee group. The department is asking us to consider three different scenarios. A in-person return to brick-and-mortar schools, a full remote learning return to school, or a hybrid model. And I can share without question, the hybrid model makes everyone the most nervous. People can wrap their head around 100% remote learning or 100% in-person. But if you're saying you're going to have cohorts of students that might be remote learning one week and in-person another week, or a red day and a black day, or one week on, one week off, that's complicated. One thing that is providing me solace right now, and I'm not allowed to talk about it, and so I will, is the department is going to be much more involved in a remote learning support. They are talking now about several options that districts can join in terms of remote learning that I think will take away from what I saw as the liability in remote learning in that we took people that were brick-and-mortar teachers who knew how to give instruction in face-to-face time and develop curriculum and asked them to do that all in a different platform. Remote learning is not new, but asking people who have never done it and don't know how to do it to do it full-time was what was new. And so I think if the department can be involved more proactively and giving districts guidance or options for that remote learning piece, they will be able to support what they are telling us will be an expectation that remote learning needs to be much more robust. It will not be a pass/fail remote learning. It will be a standards-based remote learning with the option probably of traditional grading and earning of credit. So I have talked a long time about remote learning and reopening. I'm happy to take questions that these comments might have generated from folks.
Does anybody on the committee have any questions? Sarah, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, I have a few questions. The first one is you mentioned, and I know that this is very preliminary. Is it better without the video? Is the audio better?
A little bit.
How about?
I can't hear anything.
We've lost you, Sarah. Okay, sounds good. Sarah's gonna call in. Does anybody else have any questions that they want to ask?
I don't necessarily have any specific questions right now because, you know, I have had a chance to talk to John about this. But I do want to say, John, just thank you for laying this out in such a detailed and thoughtful way for the committee, but also for the community. I think your words around where we are in the process is a great point for all of us to remember, myself included. So I just feel like it's thoughtful, it's detailed, and I just appreciate that.
I think it's a collective, shared anxiety that when, in the absence of answers, it generates more questions. And your superintendent shares that anxiety.
Well, that's actually very reassuring. Thank you.
David, go ahead.
So thanks for that introduction and as well, your summary. You passed over briefly the name of Christine McGrath. And I was just hoping maybe you could give us an overview on Christine McGrath's role and what she does for MASs.
Yep. She is a, the MASs as a new superintendent's induction program. That is a three-year cohort program. And so Christine has been assigned, my mentor or coach, they use the term coach. And so we will have regular meetings. She's actually coming to Nine Widger Road on Friday of this week. She will attend some school committee meetings. She will sit in on administrative team meeting. She will act as a critical friend when I have questions or as she does observations of my work to provide feedback on relationship building and structures within the district and leading meetings. And so she came highly recommended. And I told her that she perhaps knew one of our school committee members and she thought that that was a major conflict of interest. But she was willing to overlook it for her sheer admiration of the school committee in Marblehead.
No, that's good to hear. We've heard from Bill previously about the role that MASs plays in supporting superintendents who come into positions and things like that. So that's great. And we'll welcome Christine here to our district. Look forward to meeting her. I'm glad to hear that you've already been in contact with her. And she's helping where she can. So that's great.
I will share that I reached out to Bill because he said, "When you are assigned your mentor, please let me know." And he immediately responded, "That's wonderful. She's excellent. And she will be a wonderful coach for you."
Excellent. Great. Thanks for that.
Very good. Emily, you've got your hand up?
Oh, I'm friends with Chris. I call her Chris. I know her as Chris McGrath. So I just want everyone to know that John is in excellent hands and she is friends with Bill. I'm called up, so everyone should be extremely excited that she is here to help get everything up and going because she is an awesome person and is so experienced. And I feel really grateful that she's here.
So we have the Bill and Emily seal of approval. Nice.
Sarah, I think you are up and running, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My first question, I know this may be preliminary, but you talked briefly about, and I don't know if it was now or when we spoke yesterday, there being some type of possible fee to buy into that statewide program for remote learning. Do you have a sense of a ballpark idea what that will be? Will it be based on number of students enrolled? Is it a set fee per district? Just, I always like to keep an eye on our budget as we go through. And if it's something minor, it's not a big deal. But if it's a major fee that's coming through, we'll want to keep that in mind.
Well, I can't provide any specifics. I do think that we have the budget to support the department's remote learning options. And I think they're going to provide, at least as the leaks are coming out, tiered levels of buy-in for districts depending on their need and capacity. But I'll say funding through the CARES Act, funding through competitive state grants, and additional money through CARES on the per pupil, saying that our Chapter 70 will be level-funded with $225 additional per student. I do not think at this time there are any budgetary concerns if it's a remote learning platform that we have to buy in that the state is offering.
Perfect, thank you. My sense was that additional $680,000 that we were getting directly to the schools was probably going to cover it and be helpful. But I just wanted to confirm we are in line for that. Next, my idea or my question would be, what is the appetite between yourself and my fellow committee members for hosting a public forum as far as reopening goes? Just to kind of hear from our staff as well as our parents, what really worked? What we'd love to use maybe in a trainer model? What was positive and maybe what could take some tweaking? Before we develop an entire plan, getting a little more detailed feedback beyond the survey?
I don't want to be a spoiler alert for my second agenda item on the remote learning survey. But I do believe we have been able to generate good feedback on what worked and what didn't in terms of open responses from families. And I think the workgroup, subcommittees, task forces will have broad enough representation. And people will be able to feed information to those committees. I'm not opposed to a forum or a workshop on reopening in the fall. But I might suggest that we wait until mid-August and the department has released final guidelines. And we're looking at more factual-based decisions of what will likely be happening. I worry that at this time, it might create more anxiety than it does to calm anxiety.
I think that's a valid point. I'm also not opposed to it. But I think it would probably be more valuable, you know, a little bit further into the process so that we do have actual information to give. And can, you know, we've got this feedback with the surveys. And I know, John, you've read through all of those open answers, which is amazing. And that, so we've got that feedback that we can take and start to work with and work with our teachers and our administrators. And then kind of present some stuff, have a more realistic view on where, you know, what the opening of school is actually going to look like. And sort of, you know, because I think if you had asked any of us three weeks ago, we would have said that that hybrid model was probably where things were going to be. And now it seems like that's possibly the last place that things are going to be. So, you know, I think this is such a developing story that if we can, that I think we need to sort of watch our timing as far as when a forum would be most helpful and to us, to the school staff and administration, as well as to the community.
I can see your point. I was more thinking less presenting to them and more hearing from them. But, you know, that was just one idea. So my other, we talked about the makeup. I think a memo came out about the makeup of that committee. I had, I had never heard back, Sarah. I had sent you an email about two weeks ago asking to be part of the committee tomorrow. I don't know if anybody else signed up. I'm sitting in, attending the webinar at UC Davis on unique hurdles for K through 12 schools, given the COVID situation and possible solutions. So I think a lot of good information will come out of that. And I'd love to, you know, pass it on in any format that's possible.
And I know that John is working on putting people in who have requested to be in on those committees and kind of finding the space, you know, sort of plugging them in in different places. I think that there's also, you know, I don't want to steal your thunder, John, but I think there's going to be a second request for any other people who are interested in being on those committees. So yeah, I think it's, you know, it's a work in progress and should be wrapped up relatively soon. So I'm sorry I didn't respond. I just didn't have much information to respond with.
So I will say I don't want to disappoint people, but I have the feeling that this will be my first foray into disappointing people that may have expressed interest and gotten missed in the transition. Because I know some people sent emails to Bill and he was very good about printing them out and leaving them for me. And then I sent an email out last week, kind of, "Welcome to the district. If you're interested," and naive me didn't realize how interested people will be. And so a tidal wave of emails have come in. And so I will want to put out a second. If you were missed, please accept my apology and reexpress your interest because I don't want anyone that wants to be part of this work to feel like they're being excluded.
It's great that there's so much public interest.
John, do you want?
Never packing in March.
No, it's not. John, just so that, do you have an idea of when you'll be getting back to people about that interest? So that if, say, you know, by Friday at noon, they haven't heard from you, they'll know to sort of reach back out?
Yes. Lisa and I are currently working on the website section because the website isn't always the most user-friendly in finding information. And I want to create a very clear reopening of schools section so that people can click on that. And one of the first documents that will be posted there is what I have shared with school committee in terms of the committee structures and subcommittees. And those will have names or placeholders for like a village school teacher representative or a CPAC representative. And if people look and say, "Well, my name's not on that," for them to reach back out to me and say, "I had expressed interest. I would like to be on this group."
Great, thanks. All right, any other questions or comments from the committee on the reentry update? All right, John, if you would like to move along to the district survey on the remote learning, that'd be great.
The survey was very eye-opening. I have 1,028 pages of information to share with you. So if you would like to go get a snack or sit in a bar calounger, now may be the time to change your seat. time to change your seat. Let me first begin by acknowledging that the launch of the survey wasn't beautiful. And there were some ways that we might have made it better in terms of more specific guidance for families, particularly if you have a number of children in the Marblehead Public Schools. Should you create, should you complete the survey multiple times? It was very telling that when the survey launch was not clean, people were not shy about sharing their dismay or concern. So yes, I will concede that there were some questions on the survey that might not have been as clear as they could have been. I'm not a psychometrician, but I will say that sometimes surveys will change the order of totally agree, totally disagree, to make sure that respondents are not just going down and giving 1111111 without reading the question. I'd like to think we were purposeful in that. I can't claim that, but it's a nice thing for the new superintendent to say. I went in when I saw that there was concern and we had already, in the first 90 minutes, received 350 responses. So for me, that was telling that although the launch might have been clumsy, people were figuring it out. And so within 24 hours, we had 800 responses. And when I typed the memo for school committee with some preliminary, and I call it preliminary because we continue to accept responses, we have 1,028 that your memo is based on. We had over 100 responses from each grade level, pre-K and K were the only exceptions. And for me, that makes probably good sense that pre-K and K would not have had over 100 parents responding to a survey. Just in terms of a data point, fourth grade was the winningest grade in terms of feedback with 159 responses, followed closely by the 10th grade at 157 and the 8th grade at 155. 88% of the respondents said that there was an adult also working remotely from home. And I think that's very telling about the district, that 88% of families had a family member that was doing remote work, working remotely from home. 86% indicated that they had, they felt they had adequate access to learning materials, books, art supplies. And that's one of those things that can become urban legend, for lack of a better word, that there were too many people that didn't have the supplies and materials that they needed. Now, I don't say that to suggest that everyone had more than they needed, but for 86% of people to say they felt they had adequate access to resources, I think is comforting for me. Most families said, 36% said students spent two hours a day in remote learning. 29% said that students spent more than three hours a day. I think that was one of the learning curves for everyone in remote learning is that people thought that you would just transfer what happened in a six-hour face-to-face school day and transition it to a screen. And really, the prevailing professional development and best practice guidance is that everything is about 50%. And so if we have a third, roughly a third of our families saying that students were spending three hours a day, that's a learning curve for us, for remote learning, for making improvements for the future. It was very clear that people did not feel that remote learning expectations were clear and manageable. And so if we do go back to remote learning, we want to take that feedback into account, that we have to be much more explicit and clear in the expectations, keeping an eye to what is manageable for our families to do. We are not going to make any policy decisions based on this survey. It is not a scientific survey. I don't think it is in our best interest to ask over 1,000 families or 1,000 respondents to redo the survey. I don't think it's a good use of budget of the school district's resources to develop a scientific survey because I think this produced the information that we need for planning purposes, specifically the open response comments. And I have read, we have the ability to go in and disaggregate this data, survey by survey. I have read 1,000 pages of comments of what people felt went well and what are areas for improvement. And I will say, I so appreciate people that specifically identified schools, teachers, administrators, that made a positive difference for them and their families. Because as the incoming superintendent, that gives me an opening to build a relationship with those staff members. So thank you for your positive comments. I'm happy to take questions about the survey, but just know that it is the first of what I anticipate to be several surveys to come, surveys of staff about their remote learning experiences, surveys to families about if there are three options in the fall, what at this time would you likely choose? Are you ready to go back to full-time face-to-face learning? Would you prefer to stay in a full-time remote learning environment? Are you interested in hearing about hybrid models? So this survey, as challenging as the launch might have been, is the first of what I anticipate to be several surveys to come. And I'm happy to take questions on remote learning surveys.
Thanks, John. Sarah, you've got your hand up?
First of all, thank you very much for waiting through all of those surveys and reading all the comments. I'm sure that's where the meat of everything was. One thing that jumped out at me was the fourth grade was the largest response, yet they're one of our smallest classes. So when you run the numbers, they had a 78% response rate, which is huge, which is good. It's good to hear. But my question is, did you get a sense of, was it overwhelmingly positive? Sometimes I've found that people are more likely to speak up when they're not happy than to speak up and say, "My meal was great." So did you have a sense? And I'm not, and I'm not in any way trying to single out fourth grade. In fact, I have a fourth grader and think the world of her teachers and the staff there. But I have obviously heard some frustrations, but interestingly enough, I've heard frustrations from the fourth grade staff as well, that they wanted to make things better. So I'm just interested, did you get specific feedback at that grade level? Or no, you might not have that?
No, I do. And I would say it would be a great way to alienate me from all fourth grade teachers if I said 79% of the respondents had negative things to say about fourth grade, which I cannot say. That is not a true statement. I think across the grade levels, people shared what I like to affectionately call "wows" and "wonders." Wow, this went really well, and wonder why this didn't go as well as I had hoped. And I think that was pretty evenly distributed across respondents. And I didn't leave thinking, wow, we have an issue with a particular grade level or school.
And I don't think that it was, that we have a, of the fourth grade. I actually think very highly of all of them. I just wonder if it's a really important transition year where the kids get a little bit more independent. And I'm wondering if maybe that might be the crux of it, where we're more independent and this was a hard transition for many. So that was one question. Another was, will you be uploading particularly the narrative at the bottom, the results for us to go through? I know at other times when we've had surveys, they've been putting the drop acts for the school committee to look through if we've wanted to.
I can't speak to that. I had not considered that. If that is past practice, I will work with the chair to make a determination on how to proceed with that.
Okay. And then do you have an idea of when you might be sending out the survey for, and again, people may change up until the day before school, but do you favor full going back, a hybrid, or not going back? Because I think that would guide a lot of the planning models as well.
I would not anticipate that survey going out until the department releases their updated preliminary draft guidance. And they are very purposeful in their wording about guidance. It's never just guidance. It's preliminary draft, and the next round will be updated preliminary draft. And that's supposed to come out next week. If they follow timelines, it will be the week after. And then we would produce the survey after that. So I would anticipate no time before probably July 25th.
Okay, that's so good to have a ballpark idea. Thank you.
David, did you have something?
I'm all, I'm all set. There was just a comment that came across that said the fourth grade parents have a pretty connected Facebook group.
Oh, I see that now.
Helped in responding. And I guess, maybe I just had a general comment. I mean, Bill said this a lot. These were uncharted times, uncharted waters. We've heard that phrase and comment. And I don't think it was necessarily that people were either satisfied or disappointed, but it's just, you know, what was their experience like? I mean, nobody, nobody has ever been through this before. So I think it's, you know, the F, we know the effort was there from everybody from the top down. Parents had to readjust how they handled their schedules with their children. And so it, as John said, there's just lots of information gathering. And COVID aside, I guess it's, I guess it's good that school actually ended because now we have, we have a period of time to digest all of this information that Desi is working on, that Dr. Bucky will be working on, that, you know, will have Nan working on, all of our principals and teachers and all of the new guidance and direction that will come to us. So I just hope people will continue to provide the feedback. And as the situation evolves, we can look to address how we'll handle things in the coming, in the coming falls. But I think it's just a really good opportunity that summer happened and we can, we can get this information and try and work, work through it.
Definitely. No, I think that's, that's a great way. And I, although my boys both had amazing experiences with all their teachers, I am a very happy parent that summer has arrived. Very glad for that break. Sarah, did you have anything else?
Yes. I believe very heavily in the train-the-trainer model. And from the, some of the preliminary planning, and I love how you keep referring to that, because I think we'll probably keep getting preliminary planning right up until the day school opens. But I, one of the things we had heard was the idea of possibly reducing from 180 days to 177 and giving those additional three days for some training at the beginning of the school year. And I'm wondering if any of the information that came through was helpful in identifying people that you might want to utilize for the train-the-trainer model. I think that all of our staff really approached this to the best of their ability. Some, you know, no one signed up for this. No one signed up to teach this way, and that needs to be appreciated. But I think that some people, you know, technology is a little bit more of a native language to them and really took to it much quicker. And I'm wondering if we can identify some of those, those staff that might be able to use some of their tips and tricks to show other staff what they found really worked. Because I think for most people, it really was that technology piece and trying to still connect with their students in the same way, but doing it in the virtual world. I think at some point we'll probably be back to remote. I know that's not the popular opinion, but, you know, it's probably unlikely we'll get through 177 days without going back to it even for a short flip. So if we can utilize information and the train-the-trainer model, which I believe Nan is also a big fan of, if I recall, then I think then, you know, we can really maximize outcomes.
I agree. And that is actually a conversation that Nan and I have had. The commissioner does seem to maintain that he would like to be able to reduce the number of required school days to provide professional development opportunities for staff. And Nan and I both share admiration for the train-the-trainer model in knowing that there's capacity already within the district, people that could be valuable resources to their colleagues. And so if we're afforded that time and can identify those individuals, I think we can do some really robust professional development here within the Marblehead Schools.
Thank you. That's great. I know we don't normally go to public comment, but there was a really great question in the public comment, if everyone's comfortable. It doesn't ask to single out anybody, but I think it is a very pertinent question.
The one by Julian? So, John, I don't know if you can see the chat. So this person mentions that the class requirements assignments was an issue for many survey respondents. And do you have any kind of summary on any other significant issues and challenges that came up and then, you know, that the school system will work on? I think, you know, we're probably working on, on all of those major challenges.
I didn't catch the first part of the question.
So that, do you, can you have, were there any other significant issues or challenges that kind of popped up on the survey that sort of caught, caught your eye in umbrella ways?
I think so. And I've shared some of those with the administrative team in our initial meeting yesterday. I think those will be shared with subcommittees to work on. I really did try to focus my memo and my comments to the school committee tonight on those kind of top-tier issues that seem to be consistent throughout a number of surveys. That isn't to suggest there aren't other areas that received multiple comments.
Thanks. Any other, Emily or Megan, did you have any questions?
I don't have any specific questions at this point. You know, I think the fact, again, that we got so much response from the community, again, says that everyone is engaged and invested in this. And I think that's a great positive for the community. So there's a lot for John and Nan and the team to get through. And I think, you know, I'd like to give them a space to do that. And like John said, then feed it into our planning for the fall because I'm sure there are a number of lessons learned that we can use as we plan going forward. But no specific questions.
Thanks. All right. So that moves us on to the schedule of bills. Everybody had, there were quite a few schedules. Everybody got them in their, in your packet with the invoices. Did anyone have any concerns over any of those? Or did, Michelle, I know you're on, were there any clarifications from any of the committee members?
My question on the kindergarten tuition and the student activity fee tuition, we, those were anticipated, I think, by everybody that those would start to roll in. My question is more so to Michelle, what happens if people request those after? I know we're allowed to close the fiscal year through July 15, but what if people ask for refunds after we close FY? we close FY 20 and decide what we're handing back over to the town? If more of those are requested, where does that come from?
A jump in here. Yes, our fiscal year is officially closed. We have a couple of weeks to wrap it up. However, where those are actually held in a revolving fund, the funds just roll over. So as long as we have adequate funds during the end of the year and the beginning of the new fiscal year, we can refund them in the new fiscal year. So I'm just making sure that we have enough funds in those accounts, so that if everyone requested a refund, we would be able to process those in the new year, tapping into the funds that were there at the end of the previous fiscal year.
Okay, I know that this year we had planned to utilize more of that revolving fund than we have in years past, just as a way to hand back more of the surplus. So will you reserve, reserve enough to, in theory, refund everybody if they were to ask, just so it doesn't have to come out of our operating?
Yes, that's my plan. Yes.
Thanks, Michelle. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the schedule of bills totaling
So moved.
Sarah moved.
Second.
Megan, second. All right. Any other questions? All right, Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries five to zero. That leads us along to the bill signing process. I wanted to bring this discussion up again, and there was a memo on it with some of the information that Bill had provided us on where with when we took this up in the first place a few months ago. So basically, just to, you know, fill everybody in, I forget what day it was, but it was kind of a few weeks into quarantine, we had a discussion and voted to, I believe we voted to allow myself as the first designee, and then Sarah as the, Sarah Fox as the second designee, to sign the schedule of bills, to go over the invoices and sign the schedule of bills as a single signature instead of what we had been doing, which was three signatures, that which had been instituted in the previous FY 19 as sort of further oversight. So I wanted to bring this up again, because I believe that we had set a date on it. I can't remember what it was, if it was the end of the fiscal year, or if it was the end of the school year. But regardless, we're there, and I wanted to sort of formally bring up another vote to consider continuing this practice. It was because of the quarantine and people being remote, it got really difficult to have all three signatures. And so I, you know, and John agrees, would love it if we could continue along with this single person signing. I think the suggested motions continues it with myself as the, kind of the primary, and Sarah as the backup. But, you know, if we want to have a discussion on that, I chose it to be a date of June 30, 2021, because that allows for us to not have to keep this on our periphery at all this year, and that, you know, if we wanted to change it, we could bring it back at any point, but that we don't have to remember, you know, say if we chose December 31 of 2020, we don't have to remember to bring it back up in January. But I'm open on that as well. Megan, I know you had your hand up.
So the reason why we instituted having three, and correct me if I'm wrong, but having three people physically sign the bills was your right to put more oversight in. And at the time, the only people who actually saw the invoices were the ones who went in to physically sign those schedules. So I think it made sense at that point to put in that additional oversight. However, now that we had to go into a more remote and virtual environment, Michelle was actually able to upload and scan in all those invoices for us. So we can, all five of us, get all the invoices that have come through in addition to the schedule of bills. So from my standpoint, that was the big issue for me, making sure that we could still all see the invoices, the dates, you know, where they come from, where they're being charged in addition to the schedule. So that said, I think the process that's in place works well. It gives us the oversight, but it does make us more efficient in terms of scheduling and getting those signatures. My question really is, you know, what this recommendation is, is just to get us through, you know, this school year, and it names specific people. So my question is, you know, does it make sense to just change that policy? And instead of putting in specific names, put in specific roles, because as we know, committees will change over time.
So you're suggesting that instead of placing me and Sarah, that we place the designee as the chair, and then the secretary as the backup for signatures moving and just moving forward, so taking a date out on it completely?
Right, because I think John sent the policy through as well.
Yes.
So I don't know if, I'm just reading it quickly.
Yes.
Yeah, so listed bills, but I don't know if that means we actually have to change the policy. But I think we should just kind of take the names out of it, so that every year, we don't have to remember to go through and vote this again.
Okay. Since we're sort of playing with the motion a little bit, why don't we continue discussion before I actually ask for a motion?
I want to make sure. So far, not that, I didn't read any emotion or any language that required the bills to be uploaded and sent to all members. It talks about the schedules, which were always available to people in the past, but the bills were not. I, for one, am not okay with it as it reads, that it's only the schedules. I think that takes away all transparency and accountability. I think that if we're going to change it, I want the language to read that the actual bills will be uploaded, not just, like, the actual invoice is not just the schedule of bills. Because like Megan said, that's the important piece, to see the dates and everything on those. So that would be a sticking point for me.
So you're saying, I closed out the actual policy that was sent along to us?
I have it open.
So it's the actual policy that says the schedules are provided, and not the motion?
The motion, I thought.
So I'm a little bit uncertain, but the, can you hear me? I have the payment procedures open, and so it just says, "The list will be certified as correct and approved for payment by the school committee and then forwarded to the town auditor for processing. Actual invoices, statements, and vouchers will be available for inspection by the school committee. Lists of bills shall be signed by the superintendent of schools and a majority of the school committee." So that's, "Payment will be authorized against invoices properly supported and approved purchase orders and submitted in accordance with schedules approved by the school committee." So that's sort of where the payment procedure, it says, you know, they're available for inspection.
Well, I think, I mean, technically, they're available for John Smith, you know, on Brown Street or whatever. Anybody that comes and shows up and says, "I want to see invoices", has to be shown them. But I don't want to, if the whole point is that we don't all want to go into the office because of COVID to sign them, I want to make sure that they're being emailed or put in our Dropbox, all the invoices.
Yeah, I agree. And so, Michelle, is that, is it a huge pain that if we sort of made this, made this motion so that it is just moving forward, and there's no end date to it? Is it a huge pain for those scanned invoices to go into our Dropbox? Do you usually scan them, or are you doing that for the COVID piece?
I was doing it just for the COVID piece, but honestly, it's not that much additional work. I've got the business office staff all trained, basically, now, not to make them sound like trained animals, but they're trained to not put paper clips in certain things, not put staples in them so they can easily be scanned. And we've got a really good process going, so there is no issue whatsoever to continue scanning them and uploading them.
Okay.
Works for me.
So I'm just looking.
One thing, one additional thing, actually, if you're looking to change the actual policy, it does say the superintendent would sign. Currently, the superintendent is not signing. The procurement officer was signing. So when I came on board, Bill actually turned the schedules for approval over to me as the procurement officer. But the policy does state that the superintendent would sign. So we might have to take this a little bit further and tweak it if that's what we're going to do, or change our process.
So how does it work in other districts?
Good question.
Yeah, I have actually never seen the superintendent sign them, to be honest. It's usually a school committee.
School committee and finance director.
School committee. It doesn't necessarily, procurement officer is not legally required to sign by mass general law, but I believe that's just a Marblehead policy or procedure that's been followed.
So it sounds like regardless of the motion that we take tonight, that we will need to go back, our policy subcommittee will need to go back and look at that policy once we reassign that sub.
Yes, I would think so.
Okay. So Sarah, do you, if you're looking at that suggested motion, I still think that it reads okay for this, but let me know if you disagree.
I'm trying to pull it up. I'm sorry, Sarah.
That's okay.
It's short, though. If you just want to read it, I can.
Okay, so it's a motion that the chair be designated to approve all bills, drafts, orders, and payrolls not otherwise presented for approval at a posted meeting to the full committee from the period beginning now, and then it says through June 30, 2021, but we changed that, "Provided that if such approval takes place, a record of such approval shall be made available to the committee at the first meeting following such approval, and that said record of approval be placed on the next meeting as an agenda item. Further, that the secretary be designated as the backup member if necessary."
Okay, that's fine. I mean, do we want to just say that any other member, I just don't want there to be, you know, a week we can't pay bills because you and I aren't there. Before, it used to be any three.
That's
Well, instead of designating a specific role, do you just say as designated by the chair in her absence, or something like that?
Yeah, for a third, that the chair would designate a backup member if necessary.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we know that in some catastrophic piece that the vice chair can go for anyways, so I don't think that's a concern. Okay, so I will officially ask for a motion that the chair be designated to approve all bills, drafts, orders, and payrolls not otherwise presented for approval at a posted meeting to the full committee from the period beginning now and going forward, "Provided that if such approval takes place, a record of such approval shall be made available to the committee at the first meeting following such approval, and that said record of approval be placed on the next meeting as an agenda item. Further, that the chair would designate a backup member if necessary."
So moved.
Okay, so Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. Any further discussion on that one? All right. Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
Yeah. And then we just leave this up with the policy, because we're still in violation of our policy.
Correct. Correct. We will get on that as soon as we redo our subcommittees. We will, that will be, I think we've got a few policies to kind of clean up this year and sort of look at. And I'm sure as far as the ongoing reentry plan goes, there's probably going to be some policies that need to be addressed as well. So I think the policy committee will be busy this year. All right, so that leads us to the breakfast and lunch program update. And Michelle, can I turn it over to you for an update on that? I know Samantha Rosado, or she was at least on the call as well.
Absolutely. Yes, so, as you already know, the emergency meal program has been extended through August 31. We continue to operate each and every weekday at the Village School. We are still serving approximately about 60 students per day, or 60 children. They don't necessarily need to be students, as long as they're under the age of 18. So a couple of weeks ago, we were in discussion whether or not to continue this program, and it was projected that we would have costs that would not be covered by the government reimbursement program of approximately $2,700. Samantha Rosado jumped up and offered to set up a fundraiser for this, and I cannot thank Samantha enough. She was fabulous in orchestrating this whole program. Within a number of days, she had a GoFundMe fundraiser set up, and within just a few days, she had raised the total of $2,138.15 through the GoFundMe. In addition, she also collected a few donations through Venmo, and we also had a couple of checks come in. So that, in addition to, the word was spread, and many families also decided to donate their funds that were on their child's school lunch account in our system, already our MySchoolBucks system. So between all of those combined organizations or fundraising efforts, we collected a total of $3,005.15. I believe we are still actually getting a couple notifications here and there from parents wanting to donate their students' funds to this effort. And that's actually why I have not put the official donation acceptance on the school committee agenda just yet. We want to make sure we capture all those funds. So at the next school committee meeting, I will be presenting a donation for the school committee's acceptance, which we will gladly accept and put towards this summer emergency meal program, which is ongoing. And I just want to remind families that we actually encourage you to use this. If there's any need whatsoever, we'd love to hear from you. If it is a delivery or accessing of the Village School program problem, please reach out to Richard Kelleher, our food service director. We do have a few deliveries that we make each day. As a rule, we're not able to deliver all of them, but if there's an extenuating circumstance, we can certainly accommodate that. And this program helps the community, it helps families in need, and it also helps us to keep our program running and funded. So the more participation we have, our costs actually go down. So we encourage everyone to use it if they should need it. And if there's any questions at all, you can always reach out to myself or Richard Kelleher, and we will be more than happy to help you out. So special thanks to Samantha and everyone who contributed to this fundraiser. It's a great sign of what a great community Marblehead truly is.
Thanks, Michelle. And I know, you know, Sarah gave a commendation to Samantha, but I also just want to take a second to say thank you to Samantha for all of her hard work on that. And Michelle, thank you, and Richard too, because I know you guys were busy working with Samantha behind the scenes, making sure that all these donations could kind of come in in the appropriate places. And I thought it was just such a great idea to be able to donate the MySchoolBucks. I think that that increased participation quite a bit. So I appreciate that.
So thank you to all.
Can I ask Michelle one more thing before we move on from the finance portion?
Sure.
Michelle, were we able to do all of our pre-purchases that we were looking to do to offset the capital one-time expenditures before we closed out FY 20?
Yes. Yes, we were able to. Yep.
Okay. And then can you send out at some point just an updated list, anybody that wants, I'm assuming Megan will want it as well, just where we ended with FY 20 and what's going back to the 10? I'm assuming Megan will want it as well. Just where we ended with FY '20 and what's going back to the town?
Yes, we won't know that for a couple more weeks. The invoices are still coming in fast and furious. And we're, we're tracking down a lot of invoices that have not yet been received. What we do know are out there, so we won't have final figures probably till the end of the month. But yes, we will be doing that.
All right. Thank you as always, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Michelle. All right, I think that that then moves us along. We need to discuss our further retreats and summer meeting dates and pick some of those. So I think at this point, John and I and Megan have been talking about the idea of being able to possibly meet in person for more of a traditional summer workshop type format. So one of the ideas that we had kind of tossed about and wanted to present to you guys was the possibility that we might be able to meet at the Glover School outside underneath their large sort of the awning from, I believe it's the library that's above right there at the front doors, that that would provide cover from weather. It would provide plenty of space for the committee and any administrators that might need to come. And then it would have the ability for public, you know, should anyone show up to something like that. So that, and that would allow us then hopefully to probably not string together a full day as we kind of have been in the past, but it would allow us to meet for a little bit longer time than maybe we would otherwise be able to do over Zoom. And Megan's been working with Dorothy Presser on getting her to come in as well to do some of the great tutorial slash workshop pieces that she's provided in the past on some of the things that we need to focus on this coming year. So that's one. And then my guess would be that, that we'd need at least one other after that would then, you know, kind of taking it, taking it sort of in consideration that more towards the beginning of the school, we'd have something to. Thoughts, anybody?
Thank you for coming up with the idea of outside under the canopy at Glover. That's a very good idea. Megan, is Dorothy saying that they're still doing in-person seminars as they have in the past? Or, or would this be the first for them?
She said what they're doing for the new school committee members is going to be virtual, but that she is, you know, happy to do in-person sessions with us. So I think it's case by case depending on each district, but she's happy to do them.
Okay, and then could you, would you be up for sending out a list of what the current seminars they're doing are and just get some feedback from everybody on, on what people might be interested in? See if there's a consensus on what we might be interested in for our session this year?
So John and I have been talking, and Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, because I know I relayed this list to you, that it would be beneficial since we need to focus on a strategic plan that we would like to hear from her about that, about the creation of that, and then how that leads into the evaluation of the superintendent. Because I think of the current committee, David is the only one that's actually participated in one of those. And yes, they're pretty prescriptive, I think, but I think they're also from, I remember Megan in my first year, we sort of were given information on it, and it just seemed really kind of, I don't know, cumbersome, if that's the right word. So just to have a better understanding of how that goes. And then Megan, what was the other one that, that I had talked with you about talking to Dorothy?
So the ones that I've talked to Dorothy about are those, the strategic plan and the, and the superintendent evaluation.
Okay.
Those pieces. And then we had also talked about doing a separate, so like doing those two kind of in one session, if you will, because I think she said that those would take approximately two to three, I'm just looking at my notes, two to three hours in total to get through those two things, including, you know, questions and discussion. And then doing another session specifically for us around, you know, communication and what we want to put in place now that we have John and his team on board looking at subcommittees and liaisons, and then, you know, we'll have some other business that we need to get through too. And I would assume reentry would come into play in both those.
So, so Sarah, if you, if, and anybody, David or Emily too, if you have any thoughts or suggestions on any other pieces that you'd like to see covered, feel free to email myself and John, and, and we can, you know, work to either have Dorothy address it or simply just get it onto the agenda for discussion.
Okay, I didn't know if they offered anything formally on team building, where we have an entirely new team? If, if that would be beneficial?
No, that's a good idea.
I can ask her. Absolutely.
All right, so dates. I think that, in my opinion, I think we should try to choose a date for that hopefully in-person longer meeting, and then put another date on the books that would probably have to be reassessed as to sort of what was left to cover, what was, what needs to be on that agenda, whether we can have it outside again, you know, just kind of as things continue to develop through the summer where we're at. So maybe with the ability, and you guys can weigh in too, if you, that second one, if you prefer it to be on Zoom or if we prefer it to move towards another in-person.
I'm all for in-person.
Me too.
Yeah.
All right, so looking towards two in-person.
How's that for team building?
There we go.
Just on the first session, Sarah, Dorothy did give me days that she's not available, so maybe if I just list those for everybody?
Sure, yeah.
So, and we only talked about July, to be honest, because I guess I was hoping we'd get this done this month. But July 16th, July 21st, July 24th, and July 27th.
Okay. So do people want to try to make this happen next week? I've got, I'm hoping to be out of town the week of the 20th, so that puts a damper on, on being able to be in-person at that point.
Next week is out for me entirely between previous commitments, and we're actually just starting back up with some of our medical appointments. So next week's pretty heavy for me already.
Okay.
So how about, if I could throw out, how about the 28th or the 29th?
Yeah, either of those would work for me.
I have a preference with 28th, if that's okay for people.
I would, I would also, I would second, the 20, the 28th would be a preference for me as well.
Okay, I just need to be somewhere else. Sorry, I need to be somewhere else by 1:30 on that day.
Okay, so we'd look for a morning meeting, so probably, you know, probably starting around breakfast, and then going with an adjournment probably before lunch so that we don't have to deal with any kind of, of food pieces with it.
Sounds good.
Okay, so should we say like an 8:30 start?
Works for me.
Okay, 7:28 at 8:30. All right, and then the next one. So we, if, if we choose to have Dorothy back, we'd have to run that one, this next one past her. Just to make sure she would be available on whatever date we picked. Do we continue on a Tuesday morning? So the week of the 10th, to give a week off? Yeah, that's a good idea. And then does the, sort of like Tuesday, the 11th?
Not to be a pain, but I can't do the 11th.
Okay, so either the 10th or the 12th. What?
Oh, I can't do the 11th either.
Okay, so I get, the Monday would probably be a little bit more preferable to me as I've been trying not to work on Mondays, but I can arrange it if the 12th works better for everybody else.
So I'd like Monday and get it out of the way as well, Sarah.
Okay.
I might be away that week. Is there a way to like call in if I can't be in-person?
Yeah.
Just so that it doesn't, you know, make a big complication?
And I'll be honest, depending on what the numbers are, I'm, I'm going to be quick to flip to a call in just as you all know with my situation with Cecilia.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, you know, it seems reasonably safe to say that we could meet on the 28th outside together, but, you know, we'll, we'll reassess all of it. And I think, yeah, for something like August 10th, we have no idea where we'll be at, so we certainly. So in thinking that we would be outside together again on the 10th, because that's obviously what everyone would be aiming for, what time of day does everyone want to do that?
Can I just ask a question, though? Like, if we know Emily's not going to be here, does it make sense maybe to do it just like a couple of days earlier? Could do it on the 6th, maybe?
I could do the 6th or the 7th.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. Doesn't make a difference.
I mean, my brain doesn't really function on a Friday, but I could do it for you guys.
Megan, every day is Groundhog Day right now.
Good point.
David, do you have a preference? You're on mute.
Yeah, I have a pretty big event happening August 1st, and I'm all the week after August 1st.
You're out the week after August 1st?
I am.
Okay. Emily, is your, is your vacation for sure?
Um, no. So I would say let's do it, and I'll work around it.
Okay.
Right, so I, oh, yeah.
Okay, so let's move towards the 10th.
Yeah.
Emily, would you have a preference on a morning, afternoon timeframe on that?
No, it doesn't matter.
Okay. Should we do, since it's a Monday morning, should we do like a 9:00 AM? Or does anybody else have a preference for an after lunch?
I'd rather just start early and get out before the end of the day. We're outside, we have no.
Agreed.
All right, so let's move, let's do 8:10 at 9 o'clock AM. All right. There's our two dates. Great. And then we, that leaves us room for anything else that might need to happen too. And, you know, I think we've all obviously been quite flexible with the need to schedule meetings. And so if some other Zoom needing needs to be inserted in, in there at any other point, we can do that, you know, to address things. John, did you have something you needed to say?
Madam Chair, just a question. Will the exclusion of food be a trend with this school committee? Because I'd raise an objection.
No, the exclusion of food will not be. So we'll have to address that a little bit. I was just thinking that maybe it would make sense to not have two meals for that first one, a breakfast and a lunch.
Yeah, I feel much better.
Usually Richard will bring food in for us, and he does a phenomenal job, so.
Don't want to miss out on Richard's, what is it, the, is it the fried cauliflower that he does?
Yes, yes, it's the baked cauliflower, yes.
The baked cauliflower, that is one of his specialties, so we should, we should make sure that Richard is included, for sure.
All right, so I think that wraps that piece up. So that moves us on to our last official piece of business, which is to declare district surplus items. There was a few pages put into your Dropbox about different items that Todd had brought to John's attention that need to be declared as surplus. Then the process can start as to whether or not it's, needs to be thrown away or donated. So let me find where I wrote my motion. Can I get a motion to declare the district items outlined in the list provided to the school committee as surplus?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Go ahead, second to Emily.
I got it.
Thanks. Any questions on that list?
I do wonder if it behooves us for the tables to hold off just, I, I had the joy of going through the basement at Village and seeing all the surplus during the facilities assessment this year, and what a wonderful place it is. But I wonder if it behooves us where we don't know what the regulations are going to be as far as social distancing, and if our current, you know, I know a lot of our younger classrooms have small little tables that we have kids in a circle. Before we put ourselves in a position of giving away something we may need as far as tables, if we're going, if we are forced to go with smaller class sizes, does it behoove us to just remove the tables from that and then maybe vote to surplus those in September once we have a firmer idea of what we actually need as far as placing students?
John, do you, I know, do you have any, any further info on that? Or Michelle, do you have anything to add on what the process would be? And if we declared it a surplus now and then ended up needing it, could we reverse that? Or, you know, what, what's that process?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, once you determine this is surplus, we are going to make sure that there is no useful life or that, you know, someone else can't use it. I did speak with Todd earlier today, and most of the items on that list have been in storage for more than 10 years and are in really, really poor shape. He did mention the only thing that was of, of any value would be some tables. So we will certainly make sure that we, you know, anything that we might be able to use, we will put aside, especially not knowing what our reopening plans are exactly at this point. So if there's any chance at using them, we can certainly put those aside and, and, you know, undeclare them as surplus at a later date. That's not a problem whatsoever. But most of these things are just taking up space, and they're really trash. You know, all the scrubbers, all the vacuums, it's equipment that does not work. A lot of the, a lot of the furniture is very wobbly. It's just not items that we can use. It's taking up space, and basically we are looking for storage ability to store all this PPE, and it's just, it's coming to a head. I mean, everyone has, you know, storage in corners and whatnot in schools, and usually gets put to the bottom of the list. However, the, the need for storage has really brought it to the, to the top of our list at this time. And that's why we're asking you to do that tonight. And I do want to add also, I did send you guys all an email about an hour or two before the meeting. We would also like to add to that list 560 GoMath textbooks. They're the 2012 edition of the GoMath program that we are actually being forced to move on to the 2015 edition because this program is no longer being supported. It was based on some software that's no longer being supported, and mid-year, we will have to change that curriculum. So we have made that move to change to the 2015 curriculum for now. And, and as a result, we do have 560 GoMath books that basically are just taking up space at this point, and we want to have those declared as surplus as well.
Thanks, Michelle. All right, so it sounds like we can go ahead with the motion and the list, and that it's kind of noted that if there is a table or two to be held, that can be held. And otherwise, move it on. Any other questions? All right, so I will roll call. Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yeah.
All right, that motion carries five to zero. That leads us to new business. Is there any new business out there?
Um, yes, I had, I wanted to ask about putting some forums on the calendar for next, not necessarily picking a day, but committing to the idea of, we had done it a few years back where we had three to four a year, where we had public forum, where there's actual interaction with the school committee, the leadership team, and the public. And they were very, very well received. Everybody handled themselves really well. I thought they definitely bore fruit. And I personally, I know this is something we've talked about at different times and kicked around. I would like to, for us to formally commit to that.
Okay, so you want that, you want that to be added as a conversation to picking dates on the, on one of the workshops, probably, preferably the next one, but, you know, possibly into August?
Okay, yes, please. And then my other question is, moving forward with the Dropbox, can we go back to setting a date that it, I know it was that the Dropbox material would be in there by the Thursday prior to a meeting so that people could prepare ahead of time over the weekend? so that people could prepare ahead of time over the weekend and such. Can, can we commit to it being in there? You know, a certain amount of time ahead, it's really hard to come prepared.
Yeah, we've, we've already talked with John about getting back to that and working towards that pretty early on, so, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Megan?
Sure, I just, Sarah Fox, I think those are great ideas, I'm glad you brought them up. I think the forums, I'm not opposed to, but I definitely think, you know, they're great retreat topics. So hopefully we can all come prepared to kind of think about what the communication should be, both internally, you know, within our group and with the administration, but also out to the public, you know, in a way that's proactive and also two-way, because I think we've talked about this a number of times at this point. So I think that's one of the reasons why we've kind of carved out that time in the retreat to talk about that. And then, you know, I'm all for like structure and planning, so I agree, let's get some, you know, let's put a little bit more structure around our, our materials.
So there was just one piece that I wanted to bring up as well. So we all received an email from Representative Ehrlich. And she is asking just for, she, what she asked for in her email was for each of us to write, email her with any concerns that we might have. Does, do, do we want to each have the ability to email independently? Or do we want to pick someone to act as representative to, to, to get her that information? I just kind of wanted to, to bring this up to the committee for a small conversation.
I certainly plan to email her, so I don't know if that makes
Megan, did you want to weigh in?
Well, I guess I was going to go a different route than Sarah, because I feel like, you know, it'd be great if we were all on the same page and then we kind of funnel that, so we kind of look like we're, have a unified and consistent approach and that we've all talked about it. And like I said, we're all on the, on the same page. And then, you know, typically, Sarah, you are, as the chair, our spokesperson.
I thought the letter was very, very clear that she wanted to hear our individual thoughts on this. And then she was going to take time, once she had our individual thoughts, to kind of compile and revise her thoughts and what she felt was pertinent out of those. It, it's not like she was just going to present our questions, she was going to take our questions and concerns kind of percolate them down and, and then bring forth what she felt was pertinent.
And I, I agree, Sarah, that I felt like it, it was more each individual member. I just kind of wanted to bring it up to see if, you know, if that was in fact the way the committee wanted to proceed with it or if it was more of our appetite to sort of have a little bit more concise group, group thoughts put out there. I don't think there's a wrong way to approach it, I just wanted to bring it up.
I mean, you could
Well, I mean
David?
No, no, I'm sorry to interrupt, Sarah, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm the type of person that actually reaches out to my representatives often on many subjects. So this would not be by any means the first time I've talked to Lori on, on a concern. So the idea that I, I wouldn't bring my own concerns to my reps is kind of mind-blowing to me. So I, I will be talking to her regardless, but I'm also okay if you make a statement as the, the chair. I mean, I, I have no problem with that. I obviously will talk to her as, you know, a constituent regardless.
David, did you have something?
Well, I, I'm just reviewing the email and it's, um, you know, the Baker administration intends to reach out to school districts and education stakeholders over the course of the next few months and solicit feedback. While the upcoming briefing serves as a forum for House members to speak directly with DESI about concerns pertaining to their particular districts. I mean, I, I suppose we could, you know, as the elected school committee members, but I, I would like to think that maybe our superintendent and assistant superintendent could maybe come up with, you know, what we just talked about tonight, you know, what, what are the, what are the top five concerns from, from our professionals? This is not my full-time job, so a lot of work is going in, going into this. And I would, I would defer to them and, and John, and John is in receipt of over a thousand feedback surveys that he's reading through and summarizing. And so I think that might be the best way to at least, you know, maybe if John, I'd be comfortable if John sent something to you, Sarah and Megan, and then you forwarded that to Lori. Here's the concerns of people in our district. You know, something like, maybe.
I agree with David. I think, because he, she wrote it to the superintendent and the school committee.
Yeah.
Right, so I feel like they have a much, you know, in it, because they are in it, understanding of what questions that we could have. And it's a great opportunity to get the answers, I feel like, more than maybe other situations. So I, I think that's good.
Okay, great, John, maybe you and I work offline and maybe we put something together, um, coming from both of us.
I just want to get abundantly clear, because I know that this has been a theme over the last month or two, that people think, you know, others are going off the reservation and not acting by the will of the committee, that I, I will be responding to the email that was sent to me asking for my opinion and it is
That's perfectly fine. I, I have no objections to that, the email is addressed to all of us. I don't know how everybody else feels.
All right, great. Thanks for the feedback, everybody. Um, all right, any other new business?
Well, there's a little small thing called the Gary School Project that you left off the agenda, but I won't take offense.
I apologize. I didn't think there was much to
You know, it was left off the agenda for the first time since I think, you know, this project has started, but we, we, we are ahead of schedule and if I could just take, you know, there are a lot of people tuned in as, but just to update the committee members, um, give a, a brief update. So the school building committee did, did meet a couple, couple of weeks ago and received some updates and there's some work that's going on related to the interiors that Emily and Sarah and Sean and Donna and various teachers have been involved in. And as we move forward in the final phases of design, so that's exciting to hear. We continue to have our weekly owner-architect construction meetings. And today, I believe, correct me, Michelle, I think it was meeting number 13. And, you know, my remarks at the end were, it's, it's really exciting to see how three different groups have really come together, being Left Field and RDA, who have been with us for three years, but then we brought Gilbain into the mix. Everybody knows in late October, November as our CM. And it's just, it's really exciting to see and hear, you know, the conversation, the banter. There's, there's some lighthearted conversation, but it's all serious and it's all business. I mean, Michelle's been on the meetings, um, you know, they last for an hour and a half. We're sending out the, the summary minutes to the, to the committee members and I have been in the Dropbox and certainly sending out the month, the next monthly summary for June should come out in, by this Friday. But everybody's really running on all cylinders and working together as a team. And one of the things that was really interesting today that I just wanted to highlight, you think about construction and you think it's all going to be talking about dirt and steel and concrete and trucks and windows and all of that, but a large part of the meeting was talking about cost. Whether it was, you know, the cost related to, you know, future recommendations, costs related to some changes that need to be made with retaining walls. And that all of our partners, our OPM, our architect and Gilbain are very focused on the cost. And I know that's been a key aspect of the building committee and it was a key aspect of getting this project passed. And I think they're all being very good stewards of, of the taxpayers' dollars. And so it's, it's good to report that the project is, I think is a bright spot. It's exciting that it's moving forward, we're, we're staying on schedule and, and moving forward. And one of the things that we missed out on because of COVID, most of the ceremonial projects have, have sort of a groundbreaking ceremony and we were working on that in February, thinking how it might work and what it would look like, and then COVID-19 hit. So I just want to let everybody know, we're going to be looking towards September, maybe mid-September, early October, to try and do something that involves the kids from the new school district. And, you know, how we can do some sort of celebration of the project for the community and the public, um, once we see where we're at with, with COVID-19. So Cindy Schiefer and I know Emily will be involved in that, and so, so we're real excited about that. But it's moving forward. The last piece was, people do know, we did go back to the planning board for a site plan approval modification related to the brick color. And the, those submittals were, were completed. The appeal process was yesterday at 5:00 PM, there were no appeals. So that, that process is, is moving forward. And it looks like we'll start to see some concrete and site work that will begin in the next couple of weeks on, on the, at the project site. And then the, the steel and superstructure will, will start to, will start to go up after that. So just really, really, really good news, they've had good weather to, to build the school in. And just not much else to report other than that, so. All good stuff.
Great, thank you, David, and I apologize again, I will, my summer quarantine brain was hard at work.
Oh, you're in trouble, Sarah.
All right, so I think that that brings us to adjournments. So I will officially adjourn at 8:55 PM. And John, thank you, and you've made it through your first meeting and you have delivered on your first promise, promise that our meetings would be shorter than, than what we've currently sort of our MO is, so good job.
Yes, John, congratulations.
Thank you.
Well done.
Excellent job.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Okay, good night.
Don't talk about Emily, she's still here.
John, I just want to say when you talk about Gloucester, it's Gloucester. Okay.
I knew that was coming.
I'm from the Midwest, I have a handicap.
Well, and I was trying to decide whether, Emily, you would be the appropriate person as being from Gloucester or whether as the other fellow Midwesterner, I needed to school him, I'm like, hey, you gotta, you gotta tighten that up.
I just came right out and did it.
I lived in Kentucky where it was for sales Kentucky.
Wait, where did you grow up?
Newcomers down Ohio, and then I spent eight years in Kentucky. And there were 15 participants still listening to me, so.
There are.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye.